Welcome to another episode of Speaking Truth to Goodness, where this season, we're highlighting those who are stepping up to make a difference in our community. I'm Patty and with me as always is Jerry and with us this season is Andrea Voltavine, city council candidate in District Four. We're also joined by Chris Flannery, a non-binary candidate running for District Three on the Portland City Council. Chris is committed to centering the voices of everyday Portlanders in city decisions. Chris's journey from the East Coast to Portland is a story of dedication and community engagement. Starting as an AmeriCorps volunteer and later working at the Portland Housing Bureau, Chris has deeply embedded themselves in the fabric of Portland's culture and its labor union movement. Their experience spans from the practical aspects of civil service to the academic realm of research and evaluation science. We will explore Chris's unique perspective on how running for office is an extension of their activism, find hope in the transformative potential of unions and neighborhood associations, and discuss the exciting and necessary changes coming to Portland's government system, including ranked choice voting and charter reform. We'll also discuss how empathy can remain a core value in politics, ensuring that every decision reflects the needs and desires of Portland's diverse population. Join us as we unpack what it means to run as a non-binary candidate in today's political landscape and how Chris plans to bring their vision for a more inclusive and responsive government to life. Here it is.
Just remember, you're being iconic.
Right?
Exactly.
We all gotta stand out. There's 70 candidates.
Oh, my goodness.
Gotta do something right.
Right? Like, what, at what point do we have to start doing like bizarre haircuts?
Oh, yeah.
Facial tattoos to be like, "It's me."
Uh, yeah, totally. Absolutely.
Chris, thank you so much for being here with us today.
Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to have this conversation with y'all.
Yeah, so Andrea has been joining us as a guest host for the last few weeks here. Um, so maybe I'll throw it over to them. Andrea, do you want to maybe tell our listeners what it was about Chris that drew you to them as a candidate to bring to the podcast?
Yeah, well, Chris is honestly one of the first candidates that I met. We were both at an R Portland event in October and bonded really quickly because I think I introduced myself with my pronouns and they were like, "Hey, I thought I was gonna be the only non-binary candidate running." And we were like, "Nope, I'm here."
Dozens of us.
Yeah, so that was really fun and exciting and it was pretty obvious. It was a progressive candidate event, so I knew that I already kind of vibed with everybody there. But between us being both non-binary and also just sitting in proximity, having really good panel discussions at this event, it still is my favorite candidate forum I've ever gone to. So, yeah, that was just a really good start to my campaign. Uh, that was kind of my first little taste of any of this. And so ever since then, I've had like Chris on speed dial and we're like, "Hey, what's up? You wanna do this thing? How about Trans Day of Visibility? How about a queer candidate forum?" So now we're friends. It's chill.
Oh, it's chill. We're just besties forever. It's fine.
One of the things that has come up in these conversations is that because it's not winner-take-all, you can collaborate. That changes the environment completely. And that spirit of collaboration, if that carries over into actual office holders, we might have a responsive city government. I mean, it is possible, not a done deal. And the other thing that you've said is the conversations, all of the candidates, but especially the progressive ones, has created a group of people who know each other, trust each other, can rely on, count on, use. So I'm excited about that.
For sure.
Because if we don't change the way we do politics, nothing will change. It's not about policy, it's about how we treat each other and it's about whether we actually are trying to represent a constituency or the vested interests to whom we have sold our soul to get this fucking job.
Well, I mean, to jump on that, because I think that's an amazing segue to the changes, right? We're now gonna have four geographic districts. This is the first time in Portland history that you're gonna be able to know who is in charge of that street and that pothole or who is in charge of your particular neighborhood or your nearby street of restaurants and other businesses. So having that geographic representation and proportional representation is going to have huge changes and I am thrilled.
It's gonna be a wild ride for the first year or two. The transition is going to be a rodeo. But, you know, I don't think I've ever felt any enthusiasm for local politics until now. So, uh, and I'm 83, so it's a long time coming.
Well, in two years, District Three and District Four will be up for reelection. So while the terms will usually be four years, Districts Three and Four will have a curtailed initial term. Um, and my heart goes out to our current auditor who's running for reelection, having finished out someone's term, had an abbreviated term, running for another term that's gonna be abbreviated. So she'll have run three times for six years as opposed to a single four-year term.
Yeah, as far as I know right now, she's uncontested those, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like a tough job and she's been doing great, so.
Yeah, I tried to donate. She gave my money back. She's like, "There can be no appearance of a conflict of interest," so.
Beautiful.
Right? Exactly what you want in an auditor.
I love her.
That's amazing. Well, Chris, I don't know you yet. I'm wondering if you would like to share about you?
I'd be happy to. So, um, as you mentioned, I'm originally from the East Coast, so I'm an import, but I love Portland and I've made it my hometown. Um, I am an import that came from imports. Uh, my dad immigrated to this country when he was a kid. He immigrated into New York from, his mom was Greek, his dad was British, and they lived overseas in various places because of his dad's job. So I don't know where to say where he moved from, somewhere overseas and then he came here. But he was a postal worker and my mom was a nurse when I was born. I grew up on Long Island. Uh, when I was about 11, 12, my dad changed careers and he became a nurse as well. Um, and so we had a, an interesting year, moved in with my grandmother. I had the same math teacher my mom had as a kid.
What? That's a mindfuck.
Right? And then Mrs. Archibald, who was both of our favorite teacher, I can assure you. But then we moved to South Carolina, so 12 years old, South Carolina. And then the year after was 9/11. And so that was one of the first huge kind of things that took up my, like, I understood is not just an event, but a political event, like a big sea change. Because, I mean, you probably understand, we had some like childhood memories of something about Bill Clinton and, but then like suddenly here we are facing down the prospect of war overseas and which was, I think at this point, the longest-running conflict in US history. And then, you know, high school, like everybody else, you discover things about yourself and there I was, a, you know, queer teenager in Charleston, South Carolina, trying to figure it out. And, um, this was the first place I found a way to engage in activism, right? So whether you're just talking about even just being visible as a queer youth can be a form of activism. And then doing some door knocking, doing some outreach to help support candidates in South Carolina that were at least gay-friendlier. So.
Damning with faint praise.
Well, you know, we've, we've got some long-term bachelor senators down there that need to take a look at themselves, but.
I've thought about that one a little bit.
But yeah, once I, um, got through college and I didn't know what I was gonna do, so I went to grad school, totally failed, fell flat on my face. Um, and I learned a lot from that. And one of the outcomes was the AmeriCorps service. So I go from, at that point Clemson, South Carolina, I moved to Salem, Oregon. And on the basis of, I had a, an internship in grad school where I worked for a nonprofit that did everything from emergency shelter to transitional housing to homeownership and foreclosure prevention. It was a great summer experience. Um, I was doing evaluation on their programs to see how people were accessing the different services. And when they moved from the homelessness side to the homeownership side, suddenly there was a drop because those, those things didn't connect. And so we couldn't track who had gone all the way through that continuum of housing. Anyway, that one experience, because the supervisor I had at that internship was an AmeriCorps when I asked for his recommendation to a different AmeriCorps job, he apparently painted me like the next coming, like I was amazing, I could do anything. So I got hired by a small nonprofit down in Salem and I worked on housing, understanding the asset management side of it. So you build these buildings with public money, right? Um, and often they're privately owned by either a nonprofit or maybe a market rate organization. But you build a building and you're like, "I will make sure these units are affordable, meeting rent restricted for however many years." Well, that's great, but also buildings need that income to do replacements and repairs. And so really what I walked into was a portfolio of aging buildings that had been taken on because they were problem properties in the area, not enough money to fix them all. And here's this nonprofit trying to raise enough money both to do services for the residents and to deal with the deferred maintenance of their portfolio, which was pretty small-scale. Um, had some amazing training, amazing experiences. And it was through that training program, I met somebody at the city of Portland who liked what I could do with spreadsheets and PowerPoint slides, like awesome, go millennial. And that got me from, literally as AmeriCorps, I was receiving a stipend set at the poverty level. So I had $750 a month. And then when the nonprofit had hired me, I started making $12 an hour. So already I had doubled my wages by getting up, well, to have a wage in the first place. And then I got a job with the city of Portland and that started me at, and this was 2013, $27 and like 33 cents an hour. So for me, right, coming out of South Carolina, having been in the nonprofit world, before that, I thought I was gonna be an academic and now I have a good union job, pension benefits, making more money the first year than I thought I would make in 10.
Whoa.
And it changed my life. It absolutely did.
Okay. How, what changed, like, I mean, I, I think this is a really important point because I think there's a lot of people who have no idea what it's like to live on that kind of a low income and the understanding of,
Oh, man.
you know, how hard that is and how much can change.
So when I was in grad school, I was working as a graduate administrative assistant and I got, uh, $10 an hour and I was allowed to work 15 hours a week. So my paychecks were $300. Um, so I would get $600 in a month during grad school. And my rent at the time, um, my first apartment was only $260, but it was also 260 square feet, so. Um, and, you know, South Carolina is of course a very different rental market than Portland. But by the time I was in, frankly, failing out of grad school, uh, my rent was closer to 500, 600. And so it really was, all of my money went to housing and I didn't have leftover. I lived on credit cards and I lived on my loans. Um, and then in AmeriCorps, frankly, if my parents hadn't been able to support me in some ways, like they paid my, my car insurance, that would have taken basically most of my AmeriCorps living stipend. And even just trying to afford an apartment, like I shared with a boyfriend at the time. And so my half of the rent was about $300. And then I had, out of the rest of the 750, like $450 to pay for everything else, right? Any professional clothes I needed, any, um, gas costs, cell phone stuff, if I had a health issue because the, the healthcare plan for this federal service program was not great. Uh, but thanks Obama, I was able to stay on my parents' health insurance too. So I, I really did benefit a lot from those programs and those support systems.
So the thing that makes me excited about that is not that you suffered, but that you know what suffering is. And you understand what it is to be below the line that you were living at. So that, so you, you take compassion, which you can have whenever you want, and an actual knowledge of what that means. That now takes that out of an abstract political question into something that's vital and literally connected to you, connected to your body, mind, spirit, everything. And it's, for me, it's like everything else. When an issue becomes personal and not abstract, you're one step closer and the very important first step toward figuring it out and fixing it. If it's just abstract, you're never gonna get it right. You have to know what that experience is or be able to take your other experiences and use them as a lens through which, now, once you have that experience, now you know how to do that. And now, nothing is abstract. So in my mind, gratitude, gratitude.
Yeah, and if I can cut in here too, just to say that I think you bring up a really good point in terms of unless someone has their needs met, how could they possibly run for office? You know, so I've been thinking a lot about, you know, we have a small donor election program, which is a great next step to get people who, you know, are normal, everyday, average folks, queer folks, low-income folks, uh, a little bit closer to running. But even that program, I mean, there's a lot of stipulations. There's a, there's a lot of, like, you have to get a certain number of people to qualify for matching funds and, um, which, which is a great program. But honestly, like, for me, looking into it, it ties up a lot of the city's money, especially when there's like 80 candidates running. Um, and they have to kind of like put that on hold until they know exactly how many people are gonna get certified. And then I, I keep thinking too, that it would be so much better if, for instance, the city could just give, you know, "Okay, you really wanna run for office? You've collected this number of signatures. Awesome. Let's give everybody the same amount of money. You get $30,000 to just live on for a year and let's see what you do with it. Let's see how you, you know, spend that money, how you, um, are able to campaign, how are you able to go to events and that way it like levels the playing field." Because even still with a small donors' election, like sure, yes, you're going out to your constituents and you're asking for money. So like theoretically, you're getting money according to how many people actually support you. But there's a lot of like loopholes with that. And so I, I don't know, for me, and maybe this is like pie in the sky, just kind of imagining alternative ways of like, how can we support people while they're running? Um, in, in better ways, because you can't pay yourself to run, um, at all. And so you have to either have someone supporting you or be working a full-time job at the same time, which is just miserable. Because like, running for, running for office is a full-time job, if not bigger than that. So I don't know, I've just been getting curious about like, how do we make being involved and participating in politics easier? Not only for, for the people running, but you know, for the people who want to participate in, you know, in any kind of way.
I don't know. It sounds almost like a universal basic income kind of setup you're talking about there.
That's what the Republicans were talking about when Nixon was president, a guaranteed annual wage. The Republicans were talking.
Oh, you go back far enough and you can find a lot of great ideas buried. Like you talk about, um, Affordable, the Affordable Care Act and you look at Massachusetts. Like Massachusetts basically has had the Affordable Care Act before the rest of the country. I would love to go back to the top tax rates under Eisenhower, right? Like there are so many places where the Republican Party of old does not align with today's, Freedom Caucus? What are they calling themselves now? The MAGA's, the, um, America First? I don't know. We will let them run their own, uh, nicknames. We don't need to, we don't need to add.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I take it back. It was harsh.
But I was just gonna say, you mean fascists?
There's fascists on the left too.
There's fascism, there's authoritarianism. And what's, so my undergraduate was sociology. And so studying how people and groups interact is, is the way my brain was shaped by that liberal arts college. And so, yeah, when you look at the, the numbers, there's a, a large percentage of people that really enjoy authoritarian-style leadership. Um, and that's, you know, to each their own. We all have our preferences for how we'd like to be led. But one of the reasons I'm so excited about the proportional representation in Portland is now instead of fighting citywide to elect five people, right? So you need 50% plus one, everyone across the city. Now it's in your district, 25% plus one for three candidates. So 75% of people should have a candidate in office that really represents their views and shows how they would like to be governed.
Okay.
Yeah, I, oh my gosh, that lit up so much for me. In this bioregionalism class for six months, which has just been really neat. And one of the things we're talking about is territorial government, governance. And specifically like, okay, what does it look like to govern our individual watersheds instead of like these abstract municipal boundaries? And one of the things that they were talking about, like in order to do that, in order to have sort of like a revolutionary government style, you have to learn and teach participation all over again. Because I think part of the desire to fall into that authoritative sort of government style is that we'd forgotten how to participate. We've forgotten how to be agents in our own lives. We, there's just not, you know, a push toward creativity. There's not push toward, you know, critical thought. And we have arts being taken out of colleges and we have this, that, and the other thing that are just making us fit into boxes. In a lot of the US, we're still using education strategies from Prussia.
Yes.
And like all of that, but all of the, like, we're just gonna make this a pipeline to the military thing is still very much rooted. We just had the whole like JROTC battle here in Portland about, or yeah, in Oregon about, you know, if those programs can come into schools and try to advertise to kids. And so I don't know, it's very interesting thinking about our education system and the way that that is creating people who want those, these more authoritative styles of government.
I was gonna say, I think it's a trauma response, but you know.
I'll say that, yeah.
Trauma response, but also look at the way that, um, schools have been influenced over the years by different corporate interests, right? So you go back to the, the automation line days, right? And prior to that, people had skills. They were artisans. And when people, when workers struck, you couldn't just replace them with anybody off the street, right? One of the things I learned recently, when I think about the, um, the idea of a Luddite, right? Somebody who hates technology. When I learned about that, I just thought it was some backwoods peasant who was just mad about futurism. But no, later, more reading and I learned, these are workers who had their livelihood taken away because suddenly the, the moneyed interests at the top could afford a machine to do the work of 50 workers. And now you had tens of thousands of workers basically turned out into the street in what would have been their season to make their living for the year. And that's why they destroyed the machines. So really coming back and seeing how things are taught versus where the whole picture comes in. And, you know, thinking about Oregon and the history of Oregon as a sundown state, right? Oregon was a white solely state for so many years. And it, today, still has, uh, lower, um, diversity for, uh, black, African-American and other, uh, members of the global majority. And part of that is because of its, its history of excluding people of color, black indigenous people and other people of color. Um, but also because of the way it's drawn in white nationalists and skinheads. Like Portland and the Pacific Northwest have a history and we need to acknowledge that so that we can address it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that in. For sure.
Sorry, bummer.
So I spent my entire working life working with working people. It threw from the union side, even though we were a nonprofit, we were sort of union advocates and, and I, I lament, I mean, we basically presided over sort of the death of the industrial working class as a coherent group of communities and skills and sets of knowledge, um, that are, and they were taught to not value themselves. I mean, the idea is you keep a worker feeling as bad about themselves as possible. And in industrial workplaces, that's pretty easy.
Or you point to the guy down the street and say, "He's coming for your job."
Yeah, exactly. So, so it pleases me that you have a labor understanding and background because we're not so far away. The class system shifts, how you define the class system, but it never goes away. I mean, it's, we're all, we're fighting the same structures and the same economic forces and all, all of that stuff. So they just have an appreciation for people who work. So we started this nonprofit, five of us. All of us had done at least five years in industrial workplaces. So our perspective on the working class was built on, oh, I don't know, working with them, loving with them, fighting with them. It's like, uh, and it made our work really, really powerful. Um, I think the point for me in that is, 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 and it goes across everything. It's like, if you've worked, if you know, then you have, you have some appreciation for work. If you've never worked or you've worked with algorithms or whatever those rhythms are, algorithm and blues, that's what I say.
Careful, you're gonna start a new genre.
Oh, man, I wouldn't listen to that.
It won't be the first time. No. Um, so again, the point of view that I'm coming from is that the more candidates actually understand the nature of life on the planet, as opposed to life in the protected classes, particularly the white-skinned privileged classes, which defines our world. It's a terrible definition. So my enthusiasm for your candidacy is rather high.
I'd love to hear that. Thank you.
Could I, if I established an address in District Three now, could I vote for it? No, probably not.
Uh, the deadline to register to vote for the general election is later in the year.
But I would have to find a residence.
You would have to find a residence. Um, if you wanted to run.
I've already got a really favorite candidate that Andrew brought.
That's true. We had Timur on here.
Oh, he's, he's amazing and he would be the first, uh, Middle East, person of Middle Eastern descent uh, to be on the, uh, Portland City Council. And, um, teacher Tiffany, Tiffany Koyama Lane in District Three with me, she would be the first Asian American to serve on, um, Portland City Council.
And one of us would be the first non-binary person, right?
Right.
Or both of us.
Ooh.
So here is one problem with the labor movement and its organizing.
Just one.
How much time do you have? It's transactional. It wants to get people to vote for the union. It wants to get people to go out on stage. It's not, as it was in the 30s and 40s for sure, a culture of appreciation. And that's, it's gotta be transformational. All the work we do can't just be to get an outcome. It has to be about building capacity, but in a, in a, in a sense, that's much larger than, because that's a buzzword, build, capacity building. That's just bullshit. No, we have to empower people. We have to, have to, that's a terrible word phrasing. I invite us to consider that it would be in our interest to treat people well so that their inherent strengths and beauty could blossom. So underneath it all, that has to be an energy that's driving everything. And I think in these campaigns, I feel that, that it is. So as an old jaded labor lefty guy, I'm pretty excited. I might need my medication. I don't know. Keep an eye on me if I keel over.
Well, to, to gently push back on, on the labor movement, I think there are some really exciting things happening today and that have been occurring recently. Um, you know, you look at the, the teachers' strikes, the LA United, um, and they were able to bargain for the common good. They not only got raises for their teachers, they got green spaces for their students, right? You look at what PAT, um, the Portland teachers were doing during their strike and they were fighting for smaller class sizes for people's kids right here in Portland. Um, and you think about the spread of real, on-the-ground, working-class organizing that's been done at the Starbucks Workers United. Or looking at, um, you know, Chris up in New York at the Staten Island Amazon, getting a union right under Bezos's nose. I mean, we've, we've seen such a great rise in union activism. Like that hot union summer last year was very needed and necessary. Um, and I'm excited to see what more we push for as we continue to bring young folks and black leaders, leaders, other leaders of color forward.
Yeah. How, how do you see unions functioning like as a, maybe a comeback to unions interplay in government?
I think unions currently are the most effective tool for working-class organizing. Uh, unions are a place where, like, let's say you and I are at a workplace together. We might not go to the same church. We might not live in the same neighborhood. We might not be part of the same social groups, but we have a shared interest. And when we talk about those shared interests together, we're able to develop a rapport and build power. And once we've got the rest of the workplace with us, it really doesn't matter what the boss at the top cares about in terms of what he thinks it's appropriate to pay us. If we know what we need to live in the neighborhood is at $27 an hour instead of $19 an hour, one way or the other, we're going to figure out how we can afford to live where we need to live.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, if I can also cut back and, and go back to the, uh, the universal basic income conversation a little bit. As we talk about these technologies coming online and, you know, sending 50 people out of a job, I, I think it's really important to bring universal basic income into that conversation because if we had that, if we knew that, you know, there was a way for people to get retrained and they were supported financially in the meantime, then we could celebrate these technological advances.
Yes.
And that's something that I would really like to see our modern world get to is where we can be excited about AI taking over jobs people don't want to do anyway. Um, and, or for instance, and, you know, various types of machinery and allow people to have more leisure time instead and allow people to have more leisure time instead of still needing to work forty hours a week and things like that. So I think it changes the whole conversation when we shift the focus from, oh my gosh, this technology is awful to, oh my gosh, we need to really reconsider how we're supporting our population and how we're helping them flourish and thrive and how we can help everyone experience the benefit of a, a more technological society rather than have it be, you know, CEOs at the top.
Right, absolutely. Well, I think deregulation has been at the base of so many issues. When we unhitched wages from productivity and when we unleashed, um, you know, private equity on, on the stock market and on buying up health providers and on buying up single family homes. Now there's no real connection between productivity and what I make. And there's no real connection between what a company actually brings to the world and how they're evaluated on the stock market. So when we're thinking about moving forward as a country, I think we have to decide what we're going to prioritize. Putting more money on top of more money on top of more money in an account that's held offshore that we're never gonna see taxes from. Or prioritizing real investments in our community and prioritizing people like real people, again, not corporations, not Citizens United, real people and making sure that we have our, our needs met.
So we just, this ties back to our conversations about mutual aid as a really important thing to develop. And it has to be developed from the ground up, it'll never get, couldn't be, shouldn't be, but when it even occur to people that mutual aid is a really critical part of how we're gonna survive. Things can get pretty dicey in five years if they're not already, and we're gonna need mutual aid.
For sure.
To get it through it.
Well, so, I mean, that makes me think of neighborhood associations, which Chris, I know you have a connection to neighborhood associations or you feel strongly about them?
It's just a hot button topic right now, I think.
I think, so Portland has a really strong neighborhood culture. So I feel strongly about neighborhoods and I think neighborhood associations have a role to play. And much like unions and other institutions, they have their own history. Like often we think about neighborhood associations as being run by, you know, folks who have the time and the resources to attend the meetings when they're held. Um, and so, for example, I've been to a number of neighborhood association meetings recently. Um, I had started with my own and started poking out to other parts of the district.
Which is yours?
So I'm in Montevilla.
Interesting.
Which I think you're technically in Montevilla too, where we are here?
Maybe, possible.
You might be just on the other side of the line.
That's the story of my life.
But I've been pleasantly surprised recently when I've been going to these neighborhood associations to see folks that are um, you know, working, young parents, people who care about their neighborhoods and want to be uh, present and want to be making those decisions. Uh, when you look at Portland as a whole, like when I first moved here and people were telling me where to go live and where to go hang out, they, they weren't telling me about, uh, you know, a particular restaurant or a particular mall. They were like, oh, you wanna go down to Hawthorne, right? Or you wanna go hang, uh, hang out in the Alberta Arts District. And people, people take a lot of pride in that and that's something that as a community can lead to so much benefit.
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense and um, also having visited a lot of neighborhood association meetings in the last few months. Uh, it's, it's been really interesting to learn about them. The neighborhood association structure is pretty unique to Portland. Um, and there hasn't been, as far as I can understand, it hasn't been a lot of oversight over how the neighborhood associations have been run. I know, I'm getting into some hot water here.
There's history. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't mean.
No, no, go ahead, yeah, bring it in.
So um, neighborhood associations uh, used to get a good portion of their funding from the city of Portland. So it's only been in recent history, the past maybe five to ten years, that we've had a lot of changes. So the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, right, ONI, was dissolved and recreated into the Office of Community and Civic Life. Right? The um, Neighborhood District Coalition, the District Coalition Offices. So for District Three, it's gonna be the Southeast Uplift Organization and that's a nonprofit that um, has all the neighborhood associations sort of.
I ran the Southeast Neighborhood Center in nineteen seventy-four.
Yeah, so I mean, you should be, you should be speaking up. What was it, what was it like to be leading that in the seventies?
I didn't wanna disturb, but it, it just, when you said it, just, you know, it's like, well, the Mennonite Church is next door and, and Dave Stusman was so excited, he said, I can't believe I'm working with Maoists. We weren't Maoists, but that was his perception.
Well, Mennonites have great um, food saving sort of techniques, so great for neighborhood resiliency.
And Mennonite, just, you know, rhymes. But we had, it was during um, I can't remember the name of the program, but a federal program, so they, a lot of them were funded with funds from this organization, which I should know as well as I know my own name, whatever it is. We had a lot of freedom and we created some really great programs. And the neighborhood responded to those opportunities. In your district, it's more likely that property owners are controlling what goes on. So there's, there's not just neighborhood associations, there's where you're, where the economic interests lie and so on. So I think the structure, and I think we've talked about, we need to be talking about climate change at neighborhood associations.
And they are.
Absolutely, absolutely do and um, it's interesting because I, I wanna talk to you about how you're doing that, but um, the potential is enormous. It's, and it could be, and there are, what's the, there's a, there's something in northeast in an old church. Vanport Mosaic works out of there and I can't think of the name of it, but uh, there's, it's a real neighborhood association. In other words, it's not tied to the city's structure, it's just a progressive chunk that allows really good stuff to happen. So um, so I see the neighborhood associations as a very important thing and leadership always matters. I mean, who's leading that, whatever it's called now.
Southeast Uplift.
Yeah. Well, no, the.
Office of Community and Civic Life.
So it's possible in my mind that as this new system of governance in the city gets stabilized, which will take a little while, that leadership can be provided to these organizations that encourages them to be more representative of a broader, broader base. So it's just like unions, I think these are amazing opportunities, but they have to be sort of um, enriched from how a lot of people look again, but the potential is enormous. The one thing I noticed going back fifty years later is those little trees we planted, holy shit. They're really big now. They grew up to be really cool trees.
They grow up so fast.
Right, and there, there is saying, if you're planning for the future, plant trees.
Plant trees, plant trees.
So I'm really, I'm excited that you're bringing both those pieces and that knowledge of that history, which, which I'm sure is intricate, like going back to when I was there fifty years ago. Um, but we had daycare there and tool libraries and gleaning projects and it was really, it was really fun.
I mean, how relevant those things still are today. Daycare, right? Daycare is a huge obstacle for a lot of people. I heard recently that daycare now costs as much as sending your kid to college. Like, if not more.
Yeah, yeah, it's wild. But yeah, uh, just going back to neighborhood associations for a minute, I think there's also a lot of variation between them. Uh, because they're, they're all kind of independent structures unless they're in a district coalition and not all of the districts are. And some of the district coalitions are really brand new with the new district um, uh, lines. And so, for instance, uh, in your district, District Three, there's the Foster Powell Neighborhood Association and the president of that neighborhood association went to testify at City Council, City Council for, on behalf of their neighborhood association, calling for a ceasefire, which that was great. So we've got like that side of the spectrum of like neighborhood leadership and um, coalition building and, and you know, involvement in the government. And then the other side, unfortunately, you have my neighborhood, South Berlin Game, which has been in the news lately for multiple scandals. Yeah, so it like, super long story short, someone was using their personal bank account for the neighborhood association funds and got caught. Um, and there's a lot of like controversy over why the money was there, what happened to it, we don't know, that person was ousted. The like acting president is uh, a little bit confused about how neighborhood associations work. There's a lot of just like uproar going on, um, so it, it's so like you said, I think there is a lot of like enriching that needs to happen and, and like also when I talk to people about like, oh, do you know your neighborhood association? Have you checked in with them? Do you know who's running it? They're like, oh, you mean the HOA? And I'm like, no, no, no different thing. So, and then yeah, I mean, in terms of identity, it, it is typically white upper middle class uh, folks who are, who are running it. And so really trying to do whatever we can to help those, help the community sign up for leadership roles and support them and that I think will really help the neighborhood associations thrive. And I think with a, with a city of, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand people, there's no way that even twelve city councilors can really meet the needs of the public. And so we need to have these sort of micro government structures that people can have involvement in that can keep an eye on what's going on in the neighborhood and can give the city councilors uh, more information, more data and more support, so.
Yeah, it reminds me of, so, so I'm an officer in my union and our union has chapters of members. And the idea is that your chapter chair really represents that uh, group, let's call it about a hundred people underneath them. And so they bring what our board and general membership has decided back to their chapter and they bring their chapter's concerns back up to the general membership and board meetings. And so when I think about how to move forward, providing constituent services in this new government model, how are you gonna, you know, in District Three, it's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand people spread out across the eighteen different neighborhoods, right? So having those neighborhood associations, having the district coalition office to be able to help bring forward big issues and help to, to route, you know, information and help back and forth, I think is gonna, is gonna be huge and could be pivotal.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and also um, to bring it back toward mutual aid, I, I feel like when I first heard the term mutual aid, I don't know, like five years ago or maybe longer ago, um, it was kind of an esoteric concept, like, okay, yeah, we should help each other, what? You know, like obviously, but as I've been doing more, looking into it, I read Dean Spade's book, Mutual Aid. Um, and I've just been like hearing the groups that are doing mutual aid and showing up for them, like the Portland Mutual Aid Network. And really just seeing it as like a, a direct service kind of a pathway in terms of like, this is just a group of people, at least at the, the Portland Mutual Aid Network. They just show up on a downtown street corner at the same time every week and they give food and they give clothes and they give shoes and they give tents and they give tarps and someone walks up and says, can I have X? And we say yes. And it's just like this really wonderful experience of, you know, not saying no and really being able to provide for, for people in the moment. And while it's obviously like a short-term solution on that scale, it, it is giving people help right now, which does matter. It's, it's, you know, one piece of a very big puzzle, it does matter. And as I've been really looking into what mutual aid means, a lot of the very first things that we talk about in terms of resilience in terms of um, just people helping each other, is getting to know your neighbors, getting to know the people around you, building those relationships. And I can't tell you how many times I've heard people say like, you can't possibly know the full benefit you will receive if you foster a relationship, if you're really engaged, if you have no idea what that could create for you and those other people down the road. And so I also just kind of wanna plug that this year Portland's doing an interesting thing called Party on Portland or POP. And uh, through August first, through August fourteenth, you can sign up to host a block party and the city of Portland will actually help you do that and give you resources to help you do that. And that is really just them trying to help people get to know their neighbors. Because they understand how crucial that is between, you know, the neighborhood emergency teams, between the neighborhood associations and all of the the groups that are trying to get people to participate, we need to know each other, we need to meet each other, we need to practice resilience skills. We need to get to know who in our community has kids, who has disabilities, who could use some more support. Who is gonna have surgery next week and could use a meal train, you know, we need to know those things.
It's really interesting because May, May Wallace, her husband Peter, retired machinist and longshoreman um, knows everyone in his neighborhood because he walks his dog every day and talks to people every day and creates a neighborhood ro- emergency roster of numbers and ways of connecting. And oh, his other main political work now, which used to be day laborers, now it's houseless people. He connects the houseless community to this other community that, that's been developed in the neighborhood. That's just one person, kinda motivated and very good, I'd have to say. But it's like, we can be doing those things, I think this, it takes quite to get the momentum going. We, you know, it's like when there's one thing like that happening, it's harder than if there are three things. Or if there are ten things like that happening, then there's a network and then it's that scale thing, suddenly it becomes much easier. So big things start with small things. So that's maybe one of the frustrating things is we can't, we can't solve it all at once, we have to take it one piece at a time, one step at a time.
You gotta do everything one step at a time, right? I, I think we'd all love to be able to turn around and say, here's the solution, soup to nuts, we're implementing it tomorrow, it's done. But like, it's more than likely we would be wrong, right? Like, we would have a great idea and on implementation, we'd figure out like, oh, this, this is difficult. Um, but by uh, pilot projects, implementation, doing iterative attempts and, you know, honing in on what, what really works, I think we can achieve real change.
Everything we've been talking about makes me think about, you know, something that you had, Chris, in your, in your bio, which is um, how empathy figures in to what it is that you're doing. And it seems to me that if we know the people we live near and interact with them, we won't be able to stop ourselves from having, having empathy. And I know it's important to you to keep empathy in politics or to bring empathy into politics. I, I wanna like connect that to the idea that running for office is part of being an activist or that it is a way to do activist work. And I just wondered if you see any way that um, your work in politics is using empathy as that, as that connective tool?
Absolutely. Um, you know, a lot of the times people wanna talk about, how do we make our neighborhoods safer? How do we address the, these livability issues? Um, and a lot of what I've been reading about, a lot of what I've seen as successful um, drives in other countries and in other communities, really relies on if you know your neighbor, right? And if, if your neighbor's sitting outside on that bench, right, then the neighborhood kids, they know somebody's got eyes on the street and they're a little less likely to act up, right? And it goes beyond just kids, we're all like that. If we see an empty alleyway, right? We are not inclined to keep that beautiful and pristine versus if we've got a space where people are coming together to, to talk and you see a mural on the wall and you have people coming through, the streets are safer, we're all safer and we're more likely to reach out and help each other. Um, one big thing that I think folks aren't considering enough right now is the loneliness epidemic among people who are, are aging, whether they're aging in place in their homes or whether they've moved into a retirement community or whether they've gone on to a, an assisted living situation. And not everybody has family to visit, not everybody gets those visits from their family, but everyone deserves kindness and companionship. And we could be doing a lot more to address that as a community.
Well, you know, this is just very strange because, I mean, you're old, you forget things, but there was a project in San Francisco that I did some materials for of training seniors to be peer advocates. Big part of all the work that Lynn and I did, um, for other seniors. So to take seniors who are still mobile and able to work and connect, to go out and provide services to their peers that wouldn't otherwise be available to them, which then also has the effect of connecting these pieces.
But I love that idea and I would love to see us pull that out and like try, try it here. But it, it did remind me of a, a more recent project, it was called Friendship Benses and they started it in Zimbabwe as a way to address the lack of mental health care. So I think they had one psychiatrist for like every five hundred square miles or something, like look it up, it's an amazing program, but they essentially um, gave very basic mental health training to grandmothers. And they had them, um, you know, they, they had that sort of, the depression and anxiety basics. And then they said, you know, you sit on these specific benches and people could just come to them during the day and sit down and talk about what was going on. So young people, people of all ages and classes, being able to come into somebody, a community elder. So let's already start with, this is a, a community that values its elders.
Exactly.
And so these women were able to take their, their basic training and their cultural knowledge and be able to really make a difference in people's lives. And uh, New York City brought this over. So in New York City, they, they put up a bunch of, I think they were bright orange benches. And with the idea being, if you need to talk to somebody and you see somebody there, go and sit down on the bench and you can talk to them. And again, it's that idea of mutual aid. So what are we investing in this? We're investing some training classes, right? We're investing some uh, infrastructure in the benches. We're investing some training classes, right, we're investing some, uh, infrastructure in the benches. But we're not paying a full-time salary to somebody, we're not necessarily. There might, if a program gets big enough, you're gonna need some administration generally, but. Um, you know, coming from that world of nonprofits and being in the affordable housing industry, I see how. When we rely on government and businesses to provide for us, there's a lot of overhead that gets built in. They talk about it as like an industrial complex for a reason. And so there are thousands, tens of thousands of people like me across the country who are making a, you know, middle-class living off of poverty.
So, you know, you know, half of my ideas are tangential, but other cultures have intact. Family structures, they have cultures that honor elders, they have cultures that cherish young people.
Multi-generational households, yeah.
I occasionally have this thought that what if everybody who's not an immigrant left the country? And let the immigrants fucking fix it, right? I mean, they would know what to do. So we don't have quite the same infrastructure base that they would have in Zimbabwe. But the concept works with or without that, it just is more natural, it seems to me, in a culture that sees. Has a common good, has a concept of a common shared reality. Um, which we have to rebuild step by painful step.
Well, it's interesting when you're talking about these friendship benches, I was reflecting on our conversation about, um, just the economy. And how you're putting these friendship branches in and training these grandmothers and paying for that training and making those community investments. Not something that's reflected in GDP, for instance. And, you know, we have a, as a country, we have a GDP, as a state, we have a GDP, as a city, we have a GDP. And I'm really interested in looking at, there's lots of alternative measurements and alternative frameworks. For measuring well-being and measuring health of the community and things like that. And so as people talk about, you know, like revitalizing downtown, quote unquote. Uh, I'm really interested in like, how do we shift around the ways we're measuring our, our success as, as a society? Because as one of my mentors put it, uh, when you build a bomb, GDP goes up. When you drop a bomb, GDP goes up, when someone gets sick, GDP goes up, you know? And so how do we, how do we balance that with a, a true metric for well-being, for community investment? For volunteer hours, you know, volunteer hours are not at all captured by GDP, for instance. And so, I don't know, I guess like to bring it back locally, to bring it back, you know, to like Portland and how we're going to be shifting the narratives. I, I guess I'm, I'm sort of interested in that, maybe if you have perspectives on Portland's economy.
You know, the, the Portland economy, it's, it's interesting, the way, just like you're talking about. Some measures are kinda unhooked from our lived experience, like a lot of us are hearing about how the stock market's doing great. We reached thirty or forty or whatever thousands. Um, but the lived experience of people who work for a living is that groceries cost more than ever, right? Gas is not as terrible as it could be because we heavily subsidize it, but it's higher than it was. Um, and we have this ever-increasing housing cost. Um, and so I, I, I live and breathe in the housing world. And one of the things I heard recently about Portland and how important it is to get developers to build in Portland. And one of the elements that really stuck out to me is so they were looking at similar areas. Like, why are people still building, why are they still building in Seattle? Why are they still building in certain cities in California when we have the same sort of, um, loan rate environment? The same sort of regulatory environment in terms of the costs. Um, and the thing that really stayed with me is Portlanders do not make enough money. For the developers to build housing, to charge enough rent, so that they, that it pencils out for them. They wanna make their return, right, they wanna make a profit on it. And so when they're coming to Portland and they're looking at, how much can we charge you for rent, our wages are too low. And to me, that's the problem to solve, but, you know, I'm, I'm listening to this presentation, it was the, um. A consultant reporting out to city council and city council's response to this information was not how do we increase Portlanders' wages? It wasn't what can we do to raise that, it was how do we put enough money into subsidizing these developers? So that they build here anyway? Oh, yeah, furious, like.
Yeah, if you ever wanna be really angry, just show up for the city council meeting.
You can watch on YouTube, they're streaming.
Chris is twitching now, I want, I know there's, there's no video, Chris is twitching now.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that, but yeah, it's, it's wild to, to see how it works.
The culture could change with this transition to a different form of city government. Because I really do think there is a culture of, you know, what kind of subsidies? I mean, these poor communities, Amazon, bring your data farm in, you know, it'll, we'll bring jobs. Fifty jobs, I mean.
Till they get their robots up and running.
And therefore, you build new roads, you, you know, you promise to subsidize housing for the people.
And they have twice as many industrial accidents as any other warehousing company, yeah.
Just, just buy local friends, buy local.
Buy local, invest local.
So, so then it's, what are the incentives that, that we can give to small business? And what are the structures we can build to make their products available and known? I think if, if you had that information and if you had a big enough sort of, um. Different levels of available things, you could do a great campaign, people would pay a little more. But you need that network and you need capacity, you need to be able to meet those needs. But, I mean, I guess this would be part of degrowth as well, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, I mean, I think a lot, I mean, there's a lot of different strategies of great degrowth. But one thing is, yes, buy local, finding local supply chain networks and building them. And then also getting the, the information out to people in terms of like, how do we educate the public to, I, I don't know. Just something as simple as changing your Etsy filter so you're searching in your own city. Uh, like, not enough people do that and like, why not? Because then suddenly you're connected to someone in your own community, you're supporting a local artist. And the shipping costs are lower, like, it's a no-brainer.
But it's also hard for some folks because, you know, I, having spent some time in the South, right? Like W- Wally World, Walmart is where a lot of people go for their things. Even, even getting ready for the Women's March, people are going to Walmart to get their poster board and their markers, right? And once you get to a place of privilege, like I am in a privileged position now. I can go and I can buy whatever I need to buy at a local store or that, you know, is, is fair trade or I have that capacity. But not everyone does, and so when you go online and you're like, I need to buy light bulbs for my house or whatever it is. It's something you need diapers, whatever it is. And Amazon has it for ten dollars cheaper than the local spot, you're gonna save that ten dollars. The problem that comes later is, yes, this individual person was able to save that money and like, get at it. I'm not coming down on an individual consumer for this. But we don't take into account the environmental damage of that shipping. We don't take into account the human rights violations overseas at some of these, um, manufactories. And so finding ways to not just encourage local production, not just encourage local sourcing. But to also disincentivize, you know, bringing over tons and tons of plastic junk on, on supertankers. I think is, is going to be a huge shift over the next couple of decades.
If, if, if freight, freight, whatever you call it, the gas ship. As long as three football fields and two hundred feet high, how could that possibly go wrong?
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, I think also that, that ties back into, uh, food sovereignty and food security. And making sure that we have the ability to feed our people without importing food.
We're in the Willamette Valley, we can grow just about anything here and thanks to global warming, gross. Now we're gonna be in like a, like a, um, a nine, I think is the new. So you could do, uh, you could do citrus here now and avocados. Well, we already have great peaches out in Hood River, so go support some of our local farmers and orchard.
There's a, I think it's easier to grow peaches now, um, you don't have to have like a hardy variety anymore.
So we have to, we have to, but what's wrong with me today?
Very authoritative.
But not authoritarian unless I'm really being bad today, but, um. How in a time of sort of catastrophic decline, do we reintroduce hope? We've lost the habit of whatever, well, we've lost the habit of thinking about how to make things, that we have the power to make things better. We do, this is the moment that we have been waiting for. And it's so positive and so huge in its potential that I think we're completely unprepared. To not be cynical and just like, I, and now I actually, one of the questions is, I want to know what convinced you to actually run? For city council, but I also wanna thank you for doing it.
Well, I, I won't say it was, I just woke up one day, um. When I was younger, so I, I mentioned my, my grandmother, Greek, uh, very, very proud of being Greek. And very proud of that sort of like distinction, um, so really talked about how much. Participating in democracy, like how much being a part of your, um, civil environment was important. And so this is something I was like, oh, I'll do this one day, right? May- maybe when I'm retired, I am not retired, right? But this was the idea I had, like at some point when I've really reached like a, a peak of my career and I'm ready to do something different. I will absolutely run for something one day. Um, and then like I said, I went through college, a little bit of grad school. But like my tailspin of grad school and moved to the West Coast lined right up with the Occupy movement. So here was me seeing all these people taking direct action, right? And then a couple of years later, we're all getting ready for twenty sixteen, right? This election's gonna be great, oh no, oh no. And I, um, I had the benefit of getting to go to the Women's March and having that moment in time. And really seeing how many people were ready for something different. Um, after that, Run for Something was created as, it's a nonprofit, I think, I don't know, it's a really cool thing, check it out, Run for Something. But, um, they were saying, let's get people like Andrea and me, right? Like, let's get people, young people, women, non-conforming, queer candidates, candidates of color, like all these different folks. Let's get people to run for office so that we have an alternative to this guy. Um, and then, you know, again, a couple of years later, I'm, I'm working at the city. I've got, uh, I'm at a place in my life where I have stability. And, um, this, oh, this, this vote comes through, like we're changing the city charter. We're gonna have a city manager, number one is a city employee, huh, finally, yes, stop making our boss change every couple of years.
Not very competent to begin with.
They are not prepared to be the, uh, essentially, you know, CEO of a, yeah. So excited about that change, excited about the proportional representation, the ranked choice voting. And my, my wife teases me, like, this is the moment she knew I was gonna run even before I did. Cause I started talking about like, oh, this is such an opportunity, this is gonna be such a change. Um, and then the current commissioner started trying to change it and that really solidified it for me. When they're like, really what the voters didn't realize they meant was.
Oh no.
The mayor should have a veto, like that wasn't part of the vote. And then that, ma- maybe not three people, we should only have two people per district, it's like, what, you're just making things up? And it was this like, I'm the smartest guy in the room, paternalistic, I know what's good for voters better than voters know. And they've been doing this over and over again recently, right? Like, looking at, well, really what they meant about the police oversight board was, or.
They didn't really want that money, PSF money to go to that.
That's another thing.
That's a great thing in the campaign is that for it to be an issue of protecting.
PSF, it should be very clear, like a Portland Clean Energy Fund, clean energy, it is for.
Fund.
Clean energy, like you, and this idea that, oh, we've collected more money than we meant to and so we need to lower the tax? Absolutely not, no, let's take this opportunity, let's invest that money in, not just clean energy. But clean energy for the public benefit. Like, why, I, I, I read a story about a school district, yeah. A school district puts solar panels on their, their school buildings and they were able to not only save enough money to not have to do any layoffs. But they were able to give all their teachers raises, right? We can make these investments and we can take the money that comes out of them and put it right back into our community.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's beautiful, I'm glad that that fired you up. Cause yeah, I mean, it only continues, they're like getting the staff members that the new council will have. And they just had an emergency budget hearing to give the police officers more tear gas.
A million dollars for less-than-lethal munitions.
Yep, mhm, mhm, cause you know.
Did you, did you see the list of how many they still had from last year?
Yeah, and, uh, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of protests right now on the streets, happening all the time. And our right to protest is at risk and, you know, I just didn't really want Portland to double down on the, the less-than-lethal munitions. That still kill and injure people.
Right, cause it includes tear gas, it includes impact munitions, it didn't, somebody lost an eye to one of those, right?
It's really, it's really cruel and they, they, it was like a very quick meeting they threw up on the calendar last minute.
Passed as an emergency ordinance, so there's only one reading.
I'm gonna amend that, those little fuckers.
Yeah, and like. Also like, so my wife and I, my wife would like to be a birthing parent. And, uh, she was, you know, involved in the protests and, um, went down to do some chalk art. Down when the twenty twenty protests were happening and like got, you know, the tear gas was like on the ground and it like got in her eyes and stuff. And I've been hearing a lot of people talk about how, uh, fertility rates in Portland are lower and significantly affected because of the tear gas. And so I'm starting to worry about, you know, as we're trying to get pregnant, if that's gonna be part of the reason that we can't.
When DHS was here during that summer and they were putting out so much tear gas. That our Environmental Services Agency said, please stop, you're going to kill the fish in the river. Like, that literally BES, the people who are like, let's make sure that we've controlled our sewage so that it doesn't flow into the river. Was like, there is so much tear gas chemical. Um, and the thing about what they were doing at the time is they were using expired tear gas, which as it degrades over time becomes poisonous. So it's, I might have a difference of opinion from current council. On the appropriate way to handle the public expressing their dissatisfaction. Um, and I, I think that while we're talking about the changes coming, coming down the, the pike in the future. When we think about, there's going to be instead of five, twelve councillors. The mayor can be a tiebreaker, but otherwise isn't really involved. And I think this will help to balance some of this strong man, uh, fronting we've been seeing.
Yeah, I, I don't know about you, but the, I, I'm proud of, of being the protest capital of the US. You know, like we care, we, we're in the streets.
It's enshrined in the Bill of Rights.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
We could be as proud of protest as the Second Amendment folks or as proud of their guns, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm proud. And every time I see, you know, posts and, and, you know, go out to the, the pro-Palestine protests. And, and just see people really standing up for what they believe in, it's just, it's really heartwarming. And to see, you know, the, the children's protests and to see the climate protests. And I, I'm just really grateful for, for the community that we have here and the, the passion that we have here. Just, just wanna say that and offer a lot of gratitude for all of you listening out there who are participating.
Yeah, speaking of the kids, I am so excited to be seeing all these headlines about how Gen Z is gonna destroy our mass media. Structure because they're not watching regular T- sorry, I'm using air quotes, but this is audio. You know, they're not using the, the regular TV channels or they're not tuning into the same twelve artists that Clearwater was, wanted us to listen to every year. And I think what you had mentioned earlier about this sort of homogenization of culture. I think we've reached a peak and it's going the other direction now.
Yeah, to bring back to, cause we talked a little bit about degrowth and how it's tricky for people to say like, buy local. Cause it's more expensive than whatever Walmart brand, but even just the, the simplicity of like searching on Spotify for local artists. Is another, another way to like not be giving money to these big media artists, but instead be like developing community. Just by like, hey, I wanna know who's local to me and can I show up to their concerts or are they doing a free benefit or? Right, so it's like, it's, it's more than just making specifically consumer decisions. But also just like, how do I, when I do have to make consumer decisions or when I'm gonna be listening to music anyway? How do I pivot and get curious about what does it mean to be hyper-local? And, you know, I, I like to say, uh, think global but act lo- local.
Yeah, so, yeah. To, to jump in on that, I, one of the things we mentioned earlier to talk about is like what we love about Portland. And one of the things I do love about this town is. And one of the things I do love about this town is we have so many really cool creative opportunities. And interesting things to go to. So like I mentioned, I'm in Montevilla and coming up soon is the uh, well, it might be after this by the time this gets online. But the Honk event, where it's like a big brass band event and they're just gonna be playing all day in that little public square. And you could just come up, go grab a coffee from bipartisan or go across the street and get a drink, but like, I can just walk over. And have this, this musical event going on. You mentioned the pop, right? The Party on Portland, that's gonna be happening all summer. We've seen. The biking events and there's all these different street fairs and plot, you know, these things that are going on. I could not imagine this, having lived in some more rural areas and some, like, just the, the, the idea that any day of the week. I can go and I can check out, find something in Portland to do, right? Some jazz show, some, you know, picnic in the park, some kind of karaoke or trivia night. There's always something here to do and it's not the usual stuff, right? There's a whole store where you just build terrariums. Like, what? So I, I just, and to hook in even earlier, you mentioned small businesses. That is what makes this so cool, this, this town is because it's not just a Starbucks on every corner. And it's not just having the same, you know, what's available in every town across America. It's people bringing their unique, uh, and it's people bringing their weird and specifically around our um. Uh, what, the, our new Portlanders, our recent arrivals, our um, immigrant communities. Like I have had just the most fabulous time trying so many types of food in Portland. Like I got to Portland, I don't think I'd had Thai food before, right? Like, and to, to go from being like, oh, interesting, let me try this new thing. To now, you know, Mauritian food or be able to try pretty much anything you can think of. I've been, been making my way through a couple of the African restaurants recently, um, starting to develop a taste for the Angera that comes with Ethiopian food. And just, yeah, like Portland has everything that you can think of and a bunch more stuff. And it's so available to us because of the people who are here.
Absolutely, yeah. And if I could just add to that a little bit, like I think our natural landscapes are just really, really beautiful. And amazing and spectacular. I mean, we have Forest Park and we have uh, Laurelhurst and we have.
Mount Tabor.
Mount Tabor. Just amazing community spaces and, you know, I, I talked a little bit about this, but you know, as. As people running for city council, our constituents are not just the humans in our district, but also the plants and the animals and the wildlife and the rivers. And the, you know, all of these things, they're all connected too, and we have to serve them also. And really thinking about, you know, how are we protecting our, our lifeways? And how are we helping the new migrant, the new climate migration? And the people coming from that to celebrate that, you know, and to really protect and honor that because, you know, that's. It's gonna be so critical in the next five to ten years as we continue to see more and more climate disasters. Uh, really just being, being grateful and continuing the regenerative work of making sure that those spaces are still available to all people.
You know, it's, it's funny, when I had first started running and I'm trying to come up with these platform positions. And when I'm not really sure about things, I do research, I watch YouTube videos, I read things. And I found this extremely large document called the Twenty Thirty Five Comprehensive Plan. And it is, I'm a nerd, right? So I, it is a thing of beauty, right? It's like three hundred plus pages of policy and plan that's been developed by experts and run through a community. Um, engagement process that we put together as a city, thereabouts around the twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen area. And it covers things like greenways, things like animal habitat corridors, things like shade equity, all these places that. Again, having come from the East Coast, I thought I was a hippie there. I am not nearly as environmentally like far as like. I still grumble about having to sort my glass. I do it, but I grumble. And so looking at this plan and being like, oh, no, there's, there's act, there's research backing these ideas, there's data. And it will behoove us to do it, not just because, oh, we like the, the otters or whatever, but like it is going to save us in the end. Like even just joking, kinda joking about otters, like it's, it's on the coast. But because of the um, damage to the ecosystem, because of the damage to the kelp and the sea stars. Like if we're not careful, in a couple of decades, we're gonna have nothing but jellyfish and sea urchins and we're going to completely collapse the um.
I don't like either of them, basically.
I love jellyfish, I just wanna say.
Jellyfish and whatever that other thing was.
Sea urchins, little spiky things.
Little spiky things.
I like diversity more than I like jellyfish, but I do love jellyfish.
I mean, jellyfish were one of the earliest successful like invertebrates that took over the world and so they'll be there long after we're gone. As the joke goes with cockroaches and share, but.
Yes, oh, yes.
I mean, she puts on a fabulous show, no hi- no hate to share.
Why have I never heard the share part? Too funny, too funny.
We always tell our kids to grow up in share. What were, are the things that you would like to see happen? What are the things you're most excited about?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna answer that and I'm also gonna tie in one of the other questions we talked about earlier, which is books that have really impacted you. So I recently read Poverty by America, a Matthew Desmond book. Um, he's another sociologist, so he speaks the language I understand. Um, and he, he really dug into how American poverty is structured. And how our entire system is built to support that and to continue it. Uh, and highly recommend it, again, Poverty by America, it's Matthew Desmond, um, and it has.
Liked the title too.
It has been really interesting to think about some of those, those things. So for example, with our tax code. And we think about, okay, we all pay our taxes and then some people get tax breaks and tax benefits. And sometimes we think about things like, man, how much of my tax money is going to low income housing? Well, I will tell you, not nearly as much, not even like a tenth of what goes to the mortgage interest deduction, right? Where you think about how much of tax money is going towards these programs to encourage, you know, small scale farmers. Not nearly as much that's going to subsidize tobacco and oil and corn for biofuel, you know, and. One of the difficult things about changing the system is that we're all invested in it, sometimes literally. Our four O and Ks that they developed as an alternative to pensions because corporations were tired of being required to pay pensions, different conversation. So now a lot of people, you know, hardworking, everyday Americans are at the mercy of the stock market. Or they may not know that they're invested in oil and gas, they may not know that they're invested in an arms manufacturer. And in fact, some places are trying to make it illegal, Florida, uh, to invest in a, you know. Socially conscious minded type of uh, financial tool.
The E S Gs?
Yeah, E S G stuff or I, I've got a investment account with a group that's like for women, bi women, Elvest. I really like it. The lady who runs it is a Charlestownian too, so there's a little bit of like, hey, they called her the last honest broker on Wall Street. It was wild. Um, but, so yeah, there's a thing that I can invest in that's for gender equality. And so, you know, my, my, I'm invested in organizations that have women on the boards and, you know, those sort of things.
I just wanna say as someone of indigenous heritage, that my mineral rights are affected by all of this.
Right? And, and that's another place when we think about.
It's grotesque.
It is, we're all, we're all tied together and so when we say things like we should raise money on corporations and the response is, oh, but then they won't create jobs. And it's like, well, are they really creating jobs now? Like if, if, if we're, if our tax money is paying for food stamps for Walmart's employees. We're subsidizing Walmart's profits and yet somehow they're still getting tax breaks, it's, so. To pull in from that, that's the, the background of the understanding of the system comes from this poverty by America. And when I look at Portland and I think about things like direction and mutual aid. And I think about my experiences in the nonprofit world and in service with, with the city. Um, what I want us to do is to tackle it right at the root. And the number one intervention for poverty is cash. That's it, that's the number one intervention. Now, I understand this is not a super popular thing. And so the ways I'm approaching it are to say, well, let's start with living wages. If you are working a job, that job should pay you enough to live where you work. And if it doesn't, we need to fix it.
I would vote for that.
You know, I'm open to a number of ways to do this. We can either just mandate a living wage. There are some state preemptions against a city doing that, but I work in inclusionary housing, which had a state preemption against it until like six years ago, seven years ago. So don't tell me it can't be done. Um, also, there, there are ways to get around it, right? We could still say for subcontractors for the city. So you think about the homeless services money and how they're like, we can't keep enough people to actually spend it all. Well, maybe pay them more because you're expecting these people to go through extremely traumatic experiences and to do this really hard work. For less than they'd make at Target, right? Like this is, this is not a winning model uh, in terms of the, the pay. So living wages for everybody who's working. Um, and in addition to just living wages for existing jobs, apprenticeship programs, you know, you mentioned the machinists earlier. You know, I've.
Tradeswomen.
Right? The Oregon tradeswomen are great, you know, I B W, the electricians, they have an amazing apprenticeship program and the ironworkers, um. And so these are things that we could, and here are the dangerous words, public-private partnership. But there are ways that you can leverage public money with investment from the community, because there are things that business owners care about too. You know, if I'm talking about wanting to upgrade the electrical grid in Portland to be ready for solar, there will be a lot of local business interests where that aligns. And so we can see our shared interests, even if we don't agree on everything, we can find ways to work together. You know, I work with a lot of housing developers in my job and so when I think about ways to move forward in Portland. Especially with this huge push from the state to put so many units together. Well, let's build them with locally sourced materials. Let's create some sort of, and what I'd love to see is a, like a modular unit. Like a modular um, assembly factory right here in Portland, doing our best to keep things green, right? But even just being able to put together those prefab walls and then slap them up on top of a structure in Portland. We could make them here, so those wages go to people in our community who spend their wages in this community. A- as opposed to hiring an outside company or buying the units out of Texas or California where that money is going out of state. You know, I'd, I'd love to see some of that developed into a local. Source of both product and jobs.
Can I, as a, as a Portlander, can I throw my hat in the ring for uh, getting three D printed houses here?
I don't see why not. I mean, there's some issues with concrete and how concrete and environmental things. But you could probably find a way to recreate that with earthbag houses, right? You could use locally sourced sediment and, and earth. Um, sorry, this is where the nerdy like backend of the homestead environmentalism has been hiding, so.
What about hempcrete?
Oh, tell me more about hempcrete.
I mean, I don't know a lot, but.
Yeah, we do raise a lot of hemp in this state, which actually has been a problem for that um, that industry. Is we had a bunch of people get involved and grow a bunch of weed, way more weed than people in Portland could smoke. And it's depressed prices over the years and businesses are going out. Um, and they're being taken over, it's kind of recreating what we see in the rest of the economy. Where a couple of big companies at the top are able to weather these issues and we're losing those small independent farmers, growers, shops.
That is having a slight anti-capitalist tantrum.
Right?
Yep.
So I'm excited for that. I'm excited to really see investment in our community. So, you know, we live across eighty second from each other, me and Jerry. Um, and I think if I were to try to walk here, I don't know how often y'all try to cross eighty second, but it is not the friendliest of streets. And there's a lot of sidewalks that have, you know, poles in the middle of them, so if I were using a chair or another mobility device, I might not be able to do it on the sidewalk. I might have to go out into what was formerly a state highway. Um, now it's owned by Portland, now we've got federal money coming in, we're gonna be improving these intersections, we'll be adding lighting. We're gonna be protecting some of these pedestrian walkways. And I just think it's gonna make such a huge difference for the people who live there.
The fact that you've actually worked for the city means that you understand how the city works.
Sure.
For better or for worse.
Yes, exactly.
In other words, you actually understand how government functions as it impacts the real work of the city.
Yeah, there's a very big disconnect, I feel, between the way one would think the city works, listening to the politicians at City Hall. Versus once that comes down to the actual sticks and bricks, as a phrase we use a lot in housing, because it's not real until it's. Putting up the, the structurals and then filling in the.
Oh, cool. I like that, sticks and bricks. But I think that's a very important s- thing that you bring, which is, no, I actually know how this works. And a lot of very f- of otherwise fine candidates don't. Well, it's gonna change. But I think just again, the experience of anything makes you so much more effective. In sort of trying to figure out what needs to happen, so.
I think it's been interesting to see some candidates uh, campaigning on points that aren't really something that are gonna be the bread and butter of this new job. Right? Like I also care deeply about things like the tax structure, but that's more of like at the state level. Of course, we have a role to play in lobbying, right? We have a role to play as partners. But really focusing in on what city council can really get done. And what we can all agree to in those first couple of years, because it's not just gonna be one district by district. You gotta get twelve people heading in the same direction. So I think compromise and collaboration are gonna be the bywords.
I think that's that same process that we see in a kind of purer form around collaboration, getting to know each other. City council will not be able to operate in the way that it's always operated because it's a completely different playing field. And we as citizens are actually part of it.
Right.
Shocking.
Imagine, how it oughta be. I have a question for you. Um, so we talked a little bit about like the loss of biodiversity. And just kind of like the climate chaos that we're in the middle of. And I guess for me and my journey and my learning and research around both all of the local things happening to that regard. But also, you know, all of the global effects, um, I really needed to come to a sense of acceptance and grief. Around, we might not fix this problem. Um, and I think related, there's, you know, in running for office, I might not get elected. And what does it mean to you to be inside of that acceptance and that grief? And like the possibility of not winning or not fixing the climate or whatever and still be continuing? Like I guess what keeps you going and like how are you working through that grief for yourself now?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna lean on another book, um, Parable of the Sower.
Yes.
Uh, it might sound familiar to people, there's a terrible, terrible climate change and people are fleeing up the west coast to. Oregon, uh, so it's, it's, it's based locally, it's, it's by um, Octavia Butler. Um, and it, the way that she talks about, you know, the way this character narrates in these books, right? She's the, the daughter of a preacher and so she has some of that, that shapes her way of thinking. And she talks about um, how human beings are earth seed. And I thought this was a really cool philosophy. So personally, I don't um, abide by a particular faith system, but like you were, were talking a little bit earlier. Like there are some rules to the natural world about like everything is connected. And so those are the places where I find comfort and when I find um, hope. And so, you know, in um, Parable of the Sower, you've got this incredible journey. That, that's happening and all these, these different relationships that form. And you just gotta keep putting one foot in front of the other. Um, I think that as we continue to battle with the impacts that, you know, humanity has had on the climate. That there will be some, some places where the, the battle is just lost, right? Like we've got huge extinction events going on for lots of different animals. We have definitely shifted. Um, the temperature of the planet in some ways that I don't know if we're ever gonna be able to, to change or repair. Um, but it's also, it's not the first time that Earth has had some of these changes. You know, I was, I was recently watching some uh, documentary about the, you know, hundreds of millions of years that the Earth has gone through. These different evolutions and, um, you know, the, the rise of plant life and then, you know, how oxygen changed the atmosphere. You know, we would not be able to exist on Earth, you know, back uh, millions of years, but that change opened the way for something new. So when we're talking about, you know, I mentioned earlier, I've got a lot of excitement about the, the new generations coming in. Like Gen Z and Gen Alpha coming up with a very like in-your-face attitude about a, a, a change and I love it. I'm a millennial myself, we're one of the biggest generations of the population, just in terms of how many of us there are. Um, and as the um, silver wave crests of baby boomers retiring and moving into um. Sorry, I'm, I'm getting some expressions.
Jerry's looking so sideways at me about the silver wave thing.
But for the first time, boomers aren't the biggest voting block.
Quivering.
For the first time, baby boomers aren't the biggest voting block anymore. We can outvote them, no offense, Jerry.
Have trouble outvoting me, cause I'm on your uh, side.
But the, I think things are gonna take a dramatic. But the, I think things are gonna take a dramatic shift and that's why we've seen so much resistance from the. Um, and I don't just wanna say conservative, I just don't wanna say they're right, but this this group of people who are so extremist in their belief systems. About trying to dismantle governance and trying to dismantle this shared responsibility we have to each other. I I really believe in the social contract. You know, we take care of each other because we can. It's one of the first things that we see in the fossil record that shows us we had civilization. Is people with healed, broken bones. And if we stop doing that, I feel like we've lost civilization.
Have you read Parable of the Talents?
I have, I have. And then I realized there was a third book that was planned and unfortunately we're never gonna get it.
Okay, okay, but instead of writing Parable of the Trickster, Octavia Butler wrote a book called, I believe, uh Fledgling. Which is about polyamorous vampires. So please read it, it's great, highly recommend. Also highly recommend Octavia Butler's Xenogenesis series. Beautiful, beautiful classics reader for all time.
Yeah, just quick recap, sci fi and little joys are what to really bring forward in terms of.
We have an African American pioneer.
Yes.
In Octavia Butler.
She's modern prophet, as far as I'm concerned.
Just just a fabulous writer.
Yeah.
Yeah, courageous and yeah, it's been a long time since I've read Parables, so I need to go back and read it again.
I'll remind you, there is a politician who wants to make America great again. It does feel a little prescient.
Yeah, yeah, it was well before twenty sixteen, well before, well before.
It's back when that guy was still pretending he uh sold real estate.
Love and gratitude, love and gratitude.
It's sort of like, the other, the other part of hope is gratitude. Um, it's a very powerful force. I basically am kept on the planet by gratitude. I mean, literally. So, thank you. I'm and and I mean, it's it's like, oh, thank you for coming. No, 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 no. This is speaking truth to goodness. This is like, the level of hope that you engender in me, and I'm never hopeless. So you're just gilding the lily, as we used to say, we're just, it's bubbling over now. Yeah, that's what's happening. Is these are the conversations that need to take place. People love each other trying to figure shit out, you know? That's all we're doing, but we're in it together. That's, I I think that's the fundamental message. A- again, I wish I were in your district so I could vote.
Well, if you wanted to give me a hand, I am working on my two hundred and fifty qualifying donations for Portland Small Donor Program. You can donate to me at www.chrisforportland.com.
Can I just give you money?
Uh, I will have to find an attestation form to make that happen, but we can, we can work it out.
That was, that that's come up. If we're in someone else's district, it doesn't mean we can support candidates in in another district.
Yeah, I've donated to a number of candidates across town because I feel like we need to elect twelve counselors that can get work done. And if Andrea was accepting donations, I would have, however, they are very bravely approaching this in a different, a different way.
Yeah, I'm not asking for donations. I want to show that it's possible to run on less than a thousand dollars. Because I want politics to be accessible to all people and I don't wanna be taking money away from people who are barely making rent or putting food on the table. So it's a social experiment, as far as I'm concerned. And so the best way you can help me out is word of mouth. You can check out at Andra for P D X dot uh, yeah, dot com and then also on Instagram and TikTok.
And Chris, do you want to say your your how people can reach you?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, I am also on the Instagram. I could tell I'm a millennial, I have the V in front of anything. Uh, I am at Chris for Portland and so that's F O R, not the number. Um, and then my website again, chrisforportland.com. And if you email the the contact email on there, info@chrisforportland, that still comes to me.
And that's Chris.
C H R I S. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for having me. This is fabulous.
I think we should be, we should sing something.
Thank you for listening to this deep conversation with Chris Flannery. Chris's insights into the importance of community centered governance and the role of empathy in politics. Have provided us with much to consider as we think about the future of Portland. Their commitment to fostering an inclusive city that thrives on collective action and mutual support is a powerful reminder. Of what we can achieve together. As we wrap up, we encourage you to reflect on the changes you want to see. In your community and consider how you can contribute to making those changes a reality. Remember, every vote, every voice and every act of kindness contributes to the fabric of our community. Don't forget to like, comment and subscribe to our podcast for more discussions with the changemakers and leaders. Who are shaping the future of our city. Let's keep speaking truth to goodness because goodness is all around.